And I'm going to call the May 3, 2023, regular meeting of the Holland City Council to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Vreman.
Present.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Here.
Arnsoors.
Here.
Huckstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a corn.
Thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Byrd, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would ask you to join us if you're so inclined.
I'll ask you all to pray with me today. Before I start, we had an accident in Holland today. We had a Carnival, member of the Carnival team ended up hurting himself today. So pray for him and let him be in your thoughts and prayers. Will you pray with me? Father, we thank you, first of all, for this beautiful day. We pray for the individual who was hurt today. Sitting here talking with Matt, it took us back to when the Civic Center was first being built, the renovations were being done, I should say, and we had an accident then. Glad the outcome did not end like the one in 2019, but we just pray for the safety of all those working down there and for the healing of the one who got hurt. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to present Holland during this tulip time. We pray for the workers, all the volunteers. As always, they always put their best foot forward, but I just pray that it's seen this time again for all the visitors who come here. Holland's a very special place, and we know that. We thank you for it, and as we deliberate today, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and I pray this, in the name of the exalted, risen Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Quincy. Next items on our agenda are consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they'll be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
For A, absence excused; for B, approval of minutes, April 19, 2023, regular meeting; for E, city clerk, annual license renewal, 2023, 2024, adopt resolution; for F, city clerk, 360, special liquor license, adopt resolution; for G, transportation services, 2023, street tree planting project, award bid; for H, transportation services, 2023, resurfacing project, award bid; for I, transportation services, Column Park resurfacing project, award bid; for J, community neighborhood services, tax amendments to Section 16-19, floodplain management, final adoption, May 17, 2023; for K, finance, local development finance authority, Smart Zone, approved fiscal year 2024 budget; for L, finance, PA 198 tax abatement, set public hearing for coastal container, 1201 Industrial Avenue, May 17, 2023; for M, finance, purchasing Parks and Recreation Department, award fertilizer bid; for N, purchasing, Parks and Recreation Department, approve revised bid for hybrid bucket truck; for O, management administrative services, revocable license agreement, 21 West 8th Street, projecting signs and lamps.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on regular agenda? Seeing none there. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. We'll give Mr. Byrd that one this evening. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreman.
Yes.
Peters. Coronado.
Yes.
Arnsoors.
Yes.
Huckstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. In every one of our meetings of boards, committees, and commissions, we follow the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, which allows for public comment during those meetings. It's an opportunity for the public to express their opinions to council. You may discuss any matter that you would like to, but this is one-way communication. It's not a time where we answer questions or engage in conversation or discussion, but it gives you the opportunity to speak about whatever you may think is important. We do limit your time to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me, a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we're very strict about that, so we ask that you follow those rules. Having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hunrickson-Zeland. I just got this on my phone, and it is the Concerned Women of America, and our dear mayor is right on their website and giving the proclamation for Faith Month. So nationwide, this is recognized as the first municipality in the United States that has declared Faith Month. So we're honored. Faith Month, a whole month of April, the citizens of faith came together and had many events. We wanted most of our events outside of church walls so that everybody would feel welcome. We tried to keep them in the library or in the parks or whatever, and we're looking forward to next year. We also wanted to incorporate the faith, the vibrant faith, of the Hispanic community. In last council meeting, they were here to pray for you, and they do. And we believe that that makes a difference in not only what you do, but to protect you and keep you and let you know how much you're appreciated. So they did a beautiful job. It was well done, and we appreciate them for coming. The second thing is the National Day of Prayer, and that was the culminating event of Faith Month, even though it's not in April, and we're excited about that tomorrow. When I first looked up online, at one time it was called the Presidential Prayer, and what that was dubbed in information as a political ploy where people came to be known and to see one another and act in connection and networking at the prayer for that purpose. And it made them look good that they came for prayer. We're so proud that tomorrow, that is not what's going to be, that we are sincere in blessing our city, our state, and our nation, and we are confident that that makes a difference. We've also noticed in our country and in our state and in our city that there are troubling thoughts and animosities. It has gotten to some places that it is actually mean-spirited and very difficult to deal with, but we operate from the kingdom of God. We operate from the government is on his shoulders, and again, it takes two to make a horrible argument and a fight. And if we have, if we are the ones to refuse that, then we will see the peace that should be in our community. So with that being said, we have a guest this evening from Plano, Texas. This is Taylor Birchfield. She is first from First Liberty Institute, and she'll tell you a lot about what they do and what is happening in our country and how they're standing up for our religious freedoms. So again, I thank you, Mayor, for declaring April and also National Day of Prayer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Taylor Birchfield, Plano, Texas.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Birchfield with First Liberty Institute. I spoke last September, but I wanted tonight to speak a little more about awareness and action. We are the largest nonprofit law firm in the country that defends and protects your First Amendment religious freedom rights, solely only focusing on that. Our mission is to advance religious liberty across America in schools, houses of worship, faith-based organizations, the military, and throughout the marketplace and public arena. We were founded in 1972 and have evolved with the times and needs of the nation. In 1997, we began to focus on the Texas litigation as a nonprofit law firm on issues of religious liberty with Kelly Shackelford as our president and CEO. We have a military division that was founded in 2014, protecting the religious liberty of service members, veterans, with the senior counsel of Mike Berry. Why do we do it? We believe that every American of any faith or no faith at all has a fundamental right to follow their conscience and live according to their beliefs. Fighting for our religious freedom is to fight for the future of all freedoms. None of our clients would normally be able to afford the legal representation that we provide for free, and it's our priority to get religious justice for everyone. Some examples of our current cases that are happening right now is we're representing Gerald Groff. He is a United States Postal Service worker who was granted a religious commendation to keep the Sabbath holy, only to have it withdrawn a few years later. All Americans should have the freedom to work without being forced to choose between their faith and their job. We are awaiting the Supreme Court's decision, and they will determine if the law requires employers to grant meaningful religious accommodations to people of faith. We're also representing Fire Chief Ron Hiddle, who was fired by the city of Stockton, California, after 24 years of service because he attended a leadership conference that took place at a church. The city fired him, listing his attendance at the religious event and his decision to allow others to attend as the primary reasons for his termination. A case that we currently have local to you is Valerie Klosterman, a physician assistant who the University of Michigan Health System fired because of her religious beliefs and for seeking a religious accommodation from using biology obscuring pronouns and from referring patients for gender reassignment drugs and surgeries. Valerie worked for Michigan Health for 17 years and is a third generation in her family to work in her local healthcare system. She was committed to giving the best possible care to all her patients and treated them respectfully regardless of their sexual orientation or declared gender. Her supervisors called her professional, very ethical, and a pleasure to work with. In summer 2021, after a mandatory diversity and inclusion training, she asked for a religious accommodation because she could not affirm statements about gender identity that violated her deeply held Christian beliefs. Less than a month later, she was fired. To fight this injustice, we filed a lawsuit against Michigan Health for violating federal law prohibiting workplace religious discrimination. I bring these up because we all have USPS workers, we all have fire stations, and we all have health, healthcare systems. How are we able to do this? We have a 90% winning rate, and we have an amazing legal team who also networks to find attorneys and firms in local areas near where the cases are taking place to have local knowledge and offer their services pro bono. We also have a new strategy, and that's to restore faith in America. We do this by hosting events, inviting prayer partners, generous donors who give financially, where more information about that and details can be found on our website at firstliberty.org. We defend various faiths, ideologies, and backgrounds because the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is available for everyone. Since speaking last September, passing Faith Month for April was a great start. I'm going to leave you with this thought. What is Holland going to do next to restore faith in America? Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is special order of the day. We have a number of public hearings this evening. First item is 7A Transportation Services, the Sixth Street Snowmelt Improvements Special Assessment. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. In a moment, I'm going to ask the tag team of our Transportation Services Director, Brian White, and our DDA Director, Amy Sasamoto, to come up and talk about this really involved process that we use when we have snowmelt improvements in our community. And I think you've all approved already, and right after tulip time, we're going to start with a complete reconstruction of Sixth Street, which touches many, many things in that street and in the surrounding areas. But one of the things that we're definitely adding in that area is the snowmelt, and we have a historic practice policy with those snowmelts where the transmission, kind of the main water main, if you think of it, is something that the city covers those costs and the distribution, which is, you know, the brick pavers and the smaller PEX tubes, that the city covers half of those costs and the property owner covers half of those costs. So what's before you tonight is the public hearing and lots of attachments there with the map and the assessment role and the distribution of cost and ultimately the proposed resolution. So Brian, Amy, why don't you come up? I probably already kind of gave you most of the presentation, but I'm sure I missed maybe a thing or two, and then Brian can answer any questions that you might have also.
Sure. Thanks, Keith. Good evening, Mayor Box. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. Just a brief overview, if you will, of what's before you tonight, and then as Keith indicated, I'm happy to answer questions. But I guess to start out with, I'd like to just recognize Amy for helping out. We basically had meetings with all the property owners in advance of where we're at tonight just to inform folks about this. We typically take a pretty hands-on approach with these snowmelt improvements, and that holds true on this project as well. So we've already met with all the property owners, explained to them, you know, all the details and everything involved with that. But as Keith indicated, our Sixth Street project is soon to be under construction here after tulip time. That does include some snowmelt improvements, and those are detailed out in the packet. And I'm wondering if I could just touch upon the map briefly, but the map that was included in your packet is, yeah, the one pager there. So that map basically highlights all the areas that will be receiving snowmelt, and there's a key there at the bottom that talks about existing areas that are already snowmelted that won't be part of the assessments. But then also the additional sidewalk areas there, I believe that's in blue, I'm sorry, that's in green? No, sorry, that's in blue. And then there is some street snowmelt under Sixth Street, under the road itself, that's in purple there between College and Columbia. So those are the improvements that, again, as Keith indicated, as we've done on past projects and as we would propose tonight, is that we would assess one-half of the construction costs for those distribution improvements associated with the snowmelt system. There is a resolution that's also included that we would ask after the public hearing that you approve that resolution. And then as we work to complete the project, then there is a trip back to council this fall, once the project is completed, to finalize that assessment role. And so that's kind of how this would play out, if you will, with construction occurring and then us finalizing things in the fall with a finalization of that assessment role.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for staff? Mr. Byrd?
Looking at the section between Central and College, you have railroad tracks, right?
Yes.
How does that going to work, I guess? Are we tearing the railroad tracks up or?
Yeah, so the, yep, so the railroad tracks will stay. We're going to be working with CSX on some improvements there, some railroad tie work and things like that, because they're in pretty rough shape. But the snowmelt will run up to those railroad tracks, but we obviously can't go underneath them or anything like that. So we're going to get as close as we possibly can to those railroad tracks. Yep. Yep.
Other questions for staff?
Yes, and I don't know if this is proper for you. The city subsidizes or pays for most of this, and the owners get billed for the drop or whatever it is. Do you ever find any reluctant owners that this is going in? I mean, this has been our plan, and it's not been a secret, but are there any?
Sure. You know, I think that's, it's, each individual's different, but I think on a whole, I would say, generally speaking, that it's pretty well received. So, and again, we try and focus this around the downtown area. I know on some past projects where we've gone quite a bit outside of downtown, I think we may have had some more input on those, Dave's pretty familiar with some of those older projects, so.
Worked out very well, though.
We did. We found a pathway forward on that one, so.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is this, do you just invoice everybody, or is there?
Yeah, sure. Fair question. On the mechanics, so as with other assessments, this is a one-time assessment for construction, and as I indicated, we'll go ahead and finalize that this fall when construction is complete. Then those will show up on the winter tax bill as part of their tax bill. Now, they will have the option, and we'll convey this to them as part of that finalization in the fall, that they can choose to finance that over a 10-year period if they would so choose. So that's an option for them. Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Great. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
We do need to do a public hearing on this, and so at this point, I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And before I ask the council what their pleasure is on this, I do want to do one item of disclosure. If you looked very closely at the role of the special assessment role at the top of page three, there is a last name that may look familiar. Yes, that is my mother's condominium. She is part of this assessment role. I don't think that my mother being included in this will have any impact on my vote whatsoever, but I wanted to make the council and the public aware of the fact that I have a direct relative associated with this as well. So with that, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move that we approve the Sixth Street Snowmelt Improvement Special Assessment.
Moved by Arnsoors. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Huckstra. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreman.
Yes.
Peters. Coronado.
Yes.
Arnsoors.
Yes.
Huckstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Byrd.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Our next item for public hearing tonight is from our community and neighborhood services department, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, approval of the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Mark Cornelis to come up here. He will not only tell us what CDBG stands for, but he will also talk about the projects and the process that we use to use this source of federal funding for really good purposes in the community. So thank you, Mark. I'll just do it for you.
Okay. Yeah. All right, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate the time. I come to you about this time every year to have you ask for your approval of the plan for the next year of CDBG spending and programming. There's a report in your packet that I think explains what we're talking about tonight fairly well, but I do have a brief, a brief presentation that just kind of fills in some gaps. So, yeah, we're talking about the annual action plan for the community development block grant funding that would run from July 1 of '23 to June 30 of '24. It's put together over the course of about three or four months principally by myself in concert with the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, but also a significant amount of going out to the public for a public comment, or at least an attempt to gather as much public comment as we can. So the goal of the plan is to prioritize community development needs within the city in alignment with the current five-year plan. This program nests within the five-year plan that council approved and that we've been implementing since 2020, and also hopefully adheres to all CDBG program rules and regulations. So the contents of the plan, it's not a lengthy plan, and the formatting is a little bit clunky because it's a HUD prescribed template, so the formatting is a little bit awkward at times. But the contents basically are, there's a description of the consultation process that we underwent to go about in developing the plan, a listing of the resources that are being made available to us by HUD, the projects that we plan to implement, and the goals and objectives and the funding amounts that go along with those. And then there's also somewhat lengthy sections or sections that may seem like they're a little bit out of place, but trying to, HUD is trying to make sure communities are looking at some of these interconnected community development issues that we might not touch with our programming, per se, but at least we're showing that we're thinking about these things and thinking about how our plan might intersect with some of those concerns, such as affordable housing, lead-based paint, poverty reduction, some of those sorts of concerns. The public engagement component consisted of, started out in the month of January when I held two different community engagement meetings, well, one at the library and one in this room, and we had decent participation this year from those sessions. We're kind of coming off of the COVID years when we did those remotely, so just trying to get people used to, as you all, as well, trying to get people used to coming back to meetings, and I think we were successful with that. The Neighborhood Improvement Committee has kind of looked at the feedback that we received in January and then other components of the plan during the meetings that occurred since January, and then as recent as a couple weeks ago, April 18, they made a recommendation, they adopted a resolution to recommend to you folks approval of the plan. A public comment period took place, prescribed, HUD prescribed public comment period took place from March 29 to May 1, so that wrapped up. We did not receive any additional public comment during that period, and then we'll wrap things up tonight with a final public hearing. So again, yeah, the only public comments that were incorporated into the plan were the comments that were received in January. And then the heart of the plan is before you on this screen, what are the projects that we're proposing to implement, and what are the funding levels that we're proposing to use to cover those expenses? And I don't think there's any surprises here for those that are familiar with what we've covered and what the program has implemented in the past. You can see the biggest chunk of funding, about 65%, is for our city-operated home repair program. Going down the list, we have funding that we've done now for, I think this is going on our third year, where we partner with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity to provide some down payment assistance and closing cost assistance to their homeowner partners purchasing their homes. The next two lines are, come under the category of public services. We're permitted to use 15% of our allocation, and the allocation, I'll drop down to the bottom for just a minute, our allocation for the year ahead is 335,881. That's about a $13,000 increase from the current year, and I'm proposing that we reallocate $40,000 that were allocated to projects that we were not able to carry out in prior years. So the total budget, you'll see at the bottom, is 375,881. So back to those two middle lines, homelessness, outreach, and housing stabilization, we're permitted to use 15% of our funding for what HUD calls public services, and those are the two projects that fall into that category. And we go through a process of going back to those January meetings and the conversations at the NIC, looking at what are the needs in the community, those prioritized community development needs, and which ones do we feel like we can have an impact on, and who can we best partner with to address those things. And homelessness and housing stabilization for, I think, the last three years have kind of risen to the top of those conversations. And then next, we regularly, for many years running, have partnered with the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan and set up a sub-recipient agreement for them to provide testing, education, and outreach services within the Holland community, focused on fair housing. And then the last category is always part of our budget is the program administration. And when you look at those last two combined, fair housing and program administration, those both qualify as administrative expenses, and we're permitted to spend up to 20% of our allocation in that category, and that And, uh, that puts us right at around 19.3%, I believe. Just one more little tidbit, I guess, a little factoid that, um, since 1989, when we began receiving CDBG funds, the amounts that we've received as a city have totaled $12,155,000. So, that's 34 years of history with CDBG. Um, that puts us at an average of about 357, so we're a little bit below that. But in the 90s, it, yeah, there's, there's some history there, but the, the numbers were dipping in the 90s, went a, a quick jump up during the recession, and then kind of settled back down into this 330, 320 level. And we've been kind of stable there for, for some time. That's what I have prepared. Uh, back to the report that's in your packet. There's a recommendation or a request that, uh, the plan in its entirety, but more specifically the funding levels, uh, be approved by you folks tonight and the, the other things that correspond with that, having to do with the mayor signing documents and, um, establishing sub-recipient agreements.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead, Nikki.
I'll turn on my microphone. So, on this current slide, you have like a home repair program, a proposed activity. Do you collaborate with some of the, like, the former sustainability group in City Hall, now the materials task force, to work with them, um, as the home repairs, uh, take place? That there, uh, there's a level of sustainability involved or energy?
We've made an attempt to, to work closely with that program, and in, and in fact, about four years ago roughly, there was even a separated, a separate allocation to fund those projects, to fu, to fund, um, weatherization projects that were being completed by the city's program. Um, I think the first year we did that, the numbers were, were decent, and then it dipped off. I don't know all the reasons for that. The funding is, is complicated. Since, since the program has been restructured, I think there's, uh, a wider door open for, for some partnering there, but we've not seen a lot of those projects. That is an eligible project type. We can work, we can use these funds to do energy-related, uh, improvements, uh, but we've not seen the, the numbers, um, climb back up.
You're right, it's been restructured, so there might be more opportunity in the future. Okay, thank you. This is an amazing program if you, if any of it gets done. I mean, it's, it's really answering the needs that are out there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just Mr. Vreeman?
Mark, I appreciate your work. Thanks for doing it. Can you address the, um, the column of the expected amount available, uh, for the remainder, that 900,000?
Uh, that's, that's, um, it's an estimate of what we anticipate receiving. So, it's three, I think it's three numbers. This year's allocation, next year's allocation. So, it's, it's what's expected for the remainder of the five-year plan. So, it's this year's allocation, next year's allocation, which is our fifth year, and then what we cert, kind of have in the bank right now with HUD, kind of unspent funds. So, you add those three numbers up, you get close to 900,000.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, this also requires a public hearing. So, at this time, I will open a public hearing in regard to item 7B, Community and Neighborhood Services Community Development Block Grant CDBG approval of the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move we adopt the recommendation is outlined in the report.
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support? Support by Peters. Any discussion?
Just a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
It was a number of years ago, um, seems like everything was a number of years ago now, but, um, we actually had part of our budget, a, uh, social service, um, program that was very similar to the, for the process that's used now. Some of that money was from the general fund, also was, so it was used from, uh, from this money as well. But, um, as things got slim, that sort of disappeared, uh, from our budget. So, it's just good to see that we're able, at least in some small part, to reinstitute some of these things and address problems that, um, otherwise had been left to the private sector, which is not a bad thing, but, um, to see that we're able to sort of jumpstart some of these things with these funds as well is, is heartening to see. So, again, Mark, thank you for all your work on this and gathering, crossing all the Ts and dotting Is and stuff, and getting this, um, as a functional part of our community. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Any other comments from council or discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh, third of four of our public hearing items this evening, uh, from our finance department, the fiscal year 2024 Holland Energy Fund Budget Approval. Mr. Van Beek?
It's budget night, and, um, I'm going to ask Lynn McCammon to come up and first make a presentation on our Ho, Holland Energy Fund, which is separate and distinct, um, from our city budget. And Lynn has a slide or two that she's going to go through and give you an update on.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Tonight I'm here to present the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Holland Energy Fund. And as you know, the Holland Energy Fund is a nonprofit entity that supports the cities of Holland's long-range community energy plan. In fact, many of you probably heard about their newest program, which is a Home Energy 101 program. So, um, for anybody listening, I'd encourage everybody to check it out because it's really an interesting program. Uh, Mark just mentioned it's been retooled recently, and we are definitely reaching more people. In fact, since mid-October, on interesting statistics, we've reached more than 275, uh, contacts. And we're partnering with, I think it's nine different nonprofits and neighborhood groups to really reach, um, all our residents and offer some really exciting new products. So, looking at the numbers for the fiscal year 2024 budget, we see total, um, sources or revenues are $330,000. And the largest part of that, 275,000, is a contribution from the city and, uh, Holland Board of Public Works, and that's consistent with the prior years. And some of the other funding we, uh, have are some, uh, $40,000 from the on-build loan program. We receive interest income and $5,000 just general interest. But you'll see new this year, we have $10,000 listed as donations. And what that's representing is there are some new initiatives to have some fundraising events, um, so we can offer some grants or different, uh, programming. And, uh, in fact, some people may have had, seen a recent event was the first one. It was called Dyrass for Dyrass, and we did that in coordination with Earth, Earth Day and had some sponsors who were willing to, uh, donate some funds, um, on that event. So, um, we look forward to planning some more events like that in the future. On the uses side, we have a total budget of $414,150. And the largest part of that is the Home Energy Education and Retrofit Program at $190,000. And again, this new Home Energy 101 program, it is, uh, more focused on education, but it also does provide anybody who signs up with some interesting freebies that help, um, uh, create some energy savings in their, in their residence. And it's open to not only homeowners, but, uh, renters and, and so forth. So, it's been, uh, received very well. Uh, another $139,000 is allocated to the community energy plan, and the Holland Energy Fund supports the initiatives of the, uh, community energy plans. We have funding set aside once we determine what those initiatives, uh, need to be, sort of as a placeholder. Uh, we do have $67,000, uh, set aside for the on-build loan program. We do have to pay, uh, for the administrative cost of that program. And finally, it's $16,700 is just some various administration and, um, general interest costs. So, that brings us to, uh, an available fund balance of $400,600. And what that really is, is if you don't use all your funds in any given year, we, uh, keep it and hold it kind of in our savings account so that we can use it for the next years. So, that is the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. And at the bottom here, I said, uh, feel free to connect with the Holland Energy Fund on the city's website or the, uh, hollandenergiefund.com for some of this, uh, exciting new information.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Questions for staff? Mr. Vreeman?
Lynn, um, thanks for doing your work. The projected 400,000 that you have for available fund balance, uh, give me some history on that of, has that been historical, the same amount that we've just been carrying going forward as well?
So, we, um, it was for a while with building up because when the program was new, we didn't know quite, what to expect. And, um, it, we had a lot of, uh, interest early on, and then we kind of had, went to COVID years. And COVID years, we couldn't go into homes, and so it kind of, uh, had some issues where we weren't really having as, uh, many contacts with people and who were, uh, needing those services. So, in those years, we built up the fund balance. And, um, so we had, this last year, when we came into the last year, it was actually quite a bit higher, but we were holding it at that point because we were trying to determine what this new program would require, and so we wanted to make sure we had enough funds available. But in the past year, we have used more of that and brought it down, so 400,000 is a little lower because what we did is we paid off some of our principal loan, um, balance because we still do owe some money to the Board of Public Works who kind of funded the initial program for the loans. So, 400,000 is a more appropriate level as we still have some new initiatives related to the new programs, but we're not holding excessive fund balance, I guess I would say, so.
Any other questions for staff? Great. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. Uh, this also requires a public hearing, so at this point I will open the public hearing in regard to the fiscal year 2024 Holland Energy Fund Budget Approval. Is there anyone here who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move to approve the, uh, Holland Energy Fund balance as presented.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? Seeing, oh, go ahead.
I will say, I, I will talk about, um, the sustainability program a little bit later, but this is part of that Holland Energy Fund. And to your question, uh, Councilwoman Vreeman, uh, it used to, it used to be a high, um, requirement, uh, for someone to join the program, $10,000. You had to spend $10,000 to, um, have work done to your home. And so there's on-build program, on, on-build program was begun in an effort to, so you could, who could afford that? And so it's, and it, it went through, as you say, you know, COVID and all this kind of stuff, and now it's being, um, revitalized, and it's pretty impressive. So, yes, we don't know the numbers, but it's, it's a, quite an amazing program, open to everyone. Um, thank you to the BPW, uh, for partnering with this. And, um, I just say, congratulations to everybody who's working on it. It's, it's quite a team, and it's very exciting now. It used to be, you know, you just wondered when this was going to pick up steam, and it needed to be restructured, really, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, four, item four of four in regard to public hearings, uh, our fiscal year 2024 city budget. This is the big one. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, community. This is the big one. Mayor, I don't know if you said it earlier in this meeting or in, in, uh, meeting with a, uh, uh, job shadow that you had today. Really, in, in the scheme of things, this is the most important thing that we do and that probably you all oversee and direct and make decisions about and vote on every year. And this is, in some ways, really the last step in a very long and thorough process. Staff starts this work with what we call the red folders. I know that Lynn is going to change the color sometimes and really just, you know, really ca, cause people great confusion. But, uh, starts with that in December, and you all, and I know you all know this, but for everyone else, then we start the, um, coffee with council process in January, getting, um, input and feedback from the community. You guys do, uh, your retreat right after. Staff members all do now videos for you all that talks about, um, kind of how we're doing on past initiatives and where we are at that point halfway through a fiscal year. And then also talk to you from our perspective, what we think are some big things on the horizon. And then you give us direction through the strategic planning process, and then we go to work. Um, we bring you a proposed budget, um, as of April 1, which Lynn does a fantastic job with a budget in brief at that point. Uh, then you take, um, two sessions. I think you've been happy in the past. For some of you, Dave, you said earlier, it seems like a long time ago, but sometimes those were week, seemingly week-long meetings, hour after hour. I think we got it done this year, maybe six to seven hours of very thorough review that you all go through everything on this budget. We make presentations, um, and tonight is that very important part, uh, where we have a public hearing, and then, uh, potentially, hopefully that you take action on, on this budget. Um, there definitely is opportunity for public, um, input all the way along. So, I am not, we are not going to do the seven-hour version tonight, but we are going to just take, uh, some time to give some overview and perspective, um, and reminder. First, we always look back and where we think we're going to close the fiscal year that we're in right now. And at this point, um, we're taking a look at maybe having just over 300,000 in a projected surplus, um, that you all took action with the federal ARPA funds or what we affectionately call here the state and local fiscal recovery funds, uh, where you set aside and authorized that not only for some staffing priorities, pri, primarily with fire department, that we would not have otherwise done, um, as early as we did, and also, uh, move forward in the Ho, Holland Fiber Project, uh, that we've been able to, um, see continued investment in our community in residential and industrial. And that we have absolutely, um, exhibited and continue to take a look at discipline through a long-term financial forecast, um, which we go over with all of you regularly and provide as part of this budget, but also take a look at now a 50-year municipal capital improvement fund. We've been very clear and consistent in hearing that, um, for years now, you have emphasized fixing it first and infrastructure maintenance, make sure that we're good stewards of what we have before we talk about adding other things to our inventory. And we've absolutely been, for many years now, exercising, um, strategies for our pension and OPEB, other post-employment benefit strategies. And we're able to, um, send an additional $350,000 to that pension liability. And as we've talked about in the budget, we really, um, are in that phase where we're able to see the end of, of the, these commitments and really, um, have the community be able to benefit from those, um, strategies. So, I always try to come up with a little bit of a theme for each year. And this year, the theme was cautious optimism, and it cut off the bottom there, implementing the future. And just real quickly, I'll pick it up, why cautious and why optimistic? Um, reason for caution? This budget as presented, um, cities, we don't get to, we don't get to print money. We don't get to have deficits. Structurally, this, uh, budget that's being presented to you is structurally, um, is a structural deficit, which basically means we're proposing to use $154,000 in money that we've set aside, um, in fund balance to balance this budget as we go into the beginning of the year. Now, I will stress, and you all know, that we have a history of not spending, um, what we budget. So, we were in a similar position last year, and we're able to actually, um, project that we're coming in above budget. But that discipline that we have, this is, I remind you, a structural deficit. Um, we are working towards getting to the place where we won't have to do that at the beginning of the year. And that's why there's caution, and that's why all of the things that, quite frankly, were asked for and that we'd like to recommend to you, we are not recommending to you because we don't feel that that would be fiscally prudent. We're also following, like many, that there's, um, still an inflationary environment and a potential recession. And we also know that there are large portions of our revenue that we rely on the state and that there's uncertainty there, both in the personal property tax and the state shared revenue. Um, and that we als, also know- And that we also, also know, as we've talked about with you often, that in our future, we're probably looking at potentially for headly reductions, which would mean even though we levy less than your authorized millage on our, to our citizens, at some point, that, that rate continues to get rolled back by headly. And at some point, that's going to bump into the amount that we have levied historically. Lynn has a really good slide about that here shortly. Now, why are there reasons for optimism? I see that it's cut off there. I apologize for that. But it's because the foundation of what we do is really that we're doing long-term financial forecasting. And I really congratulate Lynn McCammon on leading that effort and doing that so well. We've talked about our history of disciplined budget management. We talk about that we have had an extended time here where we do have investments and growth in Holland. And that our strategic planning, a pat on all of your backs, our prior planning is paying off. And we do see that in our long-term financial forecast, we see where that is going to have relief in future fiscal years. We're also believe that we're presenting a budget to you that is responsive to the priorities that you set in January and that we know that you talk about and communicate to us on an ongoing basis. That fix it first, the focus on the long-term forecast, having external partnerships as we take a look at diversity, equity, inclusion, particularly with Lake Shore Authentic Diversity Alliance. That we're implementing Holland Fiber and that that has, continues to go very well under the leadership of Dave Koster and his team at the Holland Board of Public Works. That this budget does increase our public information coordinator from a part-time to a full-time position. That we're going to work with you and a subcommittee that you're going to assign that in order to reach out even more to our community, that we're going to experiment with a citizen academy, similar to the police academy that we have every year. We do know that election laws and early voting continues to change. Congratulations Kathy and your team on running another fantastic election yesterday. But we do know there, we're expecting increased cost in that area. We love partnerships with surrounding communities. So we're in, doing more with the Community Enhancement Program at the McAtaw Area Coordinating Council. And this is the year of projects, and Lynn is going to point that out. Highlights of Fire Station, the Ice Rink, Sixth Street, and many more. And we're not falling behind on equipment. And quite frankly, we're catching up on a period of time where we were falling behind on investments in our equipment. And we're doing well in that area. And then also taking a look at a shifting somewhat in staff with the retirement that we're having. And quite frankly, with a vote that we had yesterday and other investments that we're looking at, really wanting to create more capacity to have conversations with all of you, but take a look at economic development and, and housing interests. So I'm now going to hand it over to Lynn, who's going to go through our budget in brief. And again, there are 420-some pages in here. We promise we won't do it all. And I don't know if that's working, Lynn. So if it, if it works, great. If not, just say Keith and I'll move forward.
All right. So, and now for the numbers, the exciting part, right? So I just have a few highlights as, as Keith mentioned because, but the whole book is available online and has lots of important information that anybody can feel free to check out. So I want to start here with a look at the total city. And what do I mean by that? I just always want to make it clear because we have a great Holland Board of Public Works. And then we have the city, but really we are one entity. So we look in the budget at several different levels. And this very first level is including all of the entities together. So when we look at that, for fiscal year 2024, proposed budget sources and uses total almost $216 million. And these charts here kind of show how that's allocated among service types. And in the revenue side, we see 67% represents charges for services, which primarily represents the utility funds. And this is pretty consistent with what we see in prior years. Another 12% represents taxes and assessments. And again, that number is consistent with prior years. One thing that is in this year, which we don't always have, is we have a 3.9% planned use of reserves. And what that is, is we bonded for the Fire Station project in this year. But of course, anybody knows the project's not completed. Those projects take more than one year. So that money goes into your reserves and then we use it. And that's what that planned use of reserves is. Because we'll do a lot of that work in 2024 and might even have to carry some over for the Collin Park to '25. So on the use side, again, our categories are generally consistent, which is, is good to see. 57% represents spending on the utility funds. And the general fund accounts for 14%. And of course, this year, capital project is another 12%. And we'll look a little bit more as to what makes up some of that capital spending in, in a few minutes. So that's the combined entity. Yeah, can you click that? All right. So then we like to look at the general fund in a little more detail because it's the primary operating fund of the city. Dave Koster is going to go over a little bit more detail for the Holland Board of Public Works in a few minutes. So I'll just look at some of the general city operations. I always like to start with this on the revenue side, which is a picture of the dollar bill. We've, we've kind of classed it up a little bit this year from changing a little bit every once in a while, keep it interesting. But why I do this is because property tax represents 42% of the fund, funding for the general fund. But I also want to make clear is that when we, when you pay your property tax bill and you come into the city to pay it, that is not all for the city to use. We actually process it and then send the money to the schools and to the pool and the county. So as you can see in this dollar bill, the city's share makes up about 33% of the total. And that again is consistent with prior years. Couple of the other on the left side charts of some of the areas that we use as revenue for the general fund is state revenue sharing, and that's about 19%. And what that is, is that's our share of the state sales tax and also personal property tax reimbursement. We get, they have a pool set aside for when they took those off the rolls in the past and they reimburse us through that, through this mechanism. Finally, another 6.5 million is represented, is listed as transfers in. And that's primarily the dividend we receive from the Board of Public Works. So I want to look, give a little bit more information on the property tax since it is such a large portion. So Matt, could you forward? So this is what, yeah, this first slide, Keith kind of referred to this. So in the city here, the city charter actually authorizes a tax rate of 17.5. And I'm just kind of spent a little bit of extra time because the millage process and the property tax can be a little confusing. So I just want to kind of go over what it looks like. And then for those of you who really want more information, there's, it's called Appendix A and the large budget has a whole bunch of calculations that we're required to do for the state and a lot of information on the different assessment rolls. But one of those calculations that we have to do is called the headly, which we hear a lot about the headly. And the headly rollback rate, we have to compute this every year. And this year is 14.7609. So what that means is basically we could have a property tax rate higher than that according to our city charter, but actually we can't because we can only go up to 14.7609. And that's a state law. And that law was set aside to make sure that we couldn't excessively raise the rate. But it has some unintended consequences as we're seeing across the state. So the good news for the residents is that the city proposed rate is the same as it was last year and for actually 12 years. We've kept it at 13.8692. So we're happy once again to make sure we live within the rate that we've had. So even though we could do the headly, we're staying at that lower rate. But Matt, could you forward next slide? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Matt. Keep calling. He's probably quiet. Okay. So this kind of just shows what that looks like on the chart. So the bars are the city's tax rate. You can see that's the same for the last 12 years. The city authorized rate, which is the black line on top, that's the 17.5. That doesn't change. But what does change is that headly rate. And because the way the calculation is, you can see it's kind of going down. So that's what we talk about, some of the different limitations. And we'll hear about that, we keep looking at that as we monitor that. But there is some good news. If you check out page 29 in the large book, we also do, as part of the process every year, we kind of check our rate compared to other municipalities in the state of Michigan. And once again, we rank 19 out of 55, and that's good on the lower side. And if you look at some of the ones that have lower millage rates than, than the city, several of those have income tax revenue as well. So they might have a lower property tax, but then their residents are also paying income tax. So we like to always check that out and it's a big long list of 55, but that's on page 29 in the, in the big budget. So now, now we'll look at the expenditure side of the general fund. And total expenses are 30.6 million for the proposed fiscal year '24. And this, again, the categories are very similar. The largest spending for general fund is the public safety. And that represents over 50, almost 50% of our fund, but that's for our fire and police services. So that obviously is a, an important cost. We also have the next largest at 22% and it includes all the costs to run the city. Parks and Rec, 18%, Community Neighborhood Services, 7%, and Transportation's only 5%. But there are other funds in the city that support some of the costs related to transportation. And similarly to that, the downtown group is listed as only 1% from the general fund, but they receive funding from a lot of different other sources as well. But overall, the total expenditures for fiscal year '24 proposed is only $900,000 or 3% over the estimated fiscal year '23. And as Keith mentioned, we really have departments who are really keeping their expenditures in check given the inflationary environment where, where we're in. And there's really not a lot of new asks in this proposed budget. So if we move, we also talked about capital. We've heard capital. And as Keith mentioned, we are very focused on our long-term planning here at the city. And that includes not only the long-term forecast, but it includes a 50-year capital plan that we work with Matt on. And what we do is we take that 50-year capital plan and we match the first 10 years of that to a total projection of the operating revenues that would fund both the capital and the other operating expenses. And we do that because we want to make sure we can afford everything we want or need. It's easy to put capital, a list of our wants, but we have to make sure we can pay for them. So we're happy to say that our long-term forecast shows that we can afford what we have planned. And here in the budget, we do look at the first five years of those capital projects. And this chart is not only, I'm switching back again to where this is not only the city's general fund and general city operations capital, but it also is the Board of Public Works capital expenditures. And then we have street project capital. So this is all the different capital expenditures in the entire city. And for five years, that total is more than 221 million dollars. So you can imagine, that's a lot of capital projects that we have coming up. And the first year alone has 74 million allocated. And in the total budget book, you'll see, anybody who's really interested in seeing the different projects, each page has a list identifies a project. It identifies not only what the project's going to be, a description. It actually talks about if there's any aspects related to sustainability or the community energy plan that we should consider. And it talks about what our operating impact would be. And then it does include a nice picture. So it's kind of fun to look at. But some of the highlights for this upcoming year, we're currently already involved in the Fire Station. That's already in process. And the anaerobic digester, I think we're going to be on year 404. So that's getting really close to being done. And then we have obviously the Ice Rink planned, which we're looking forward to. And we have the broadband initiative in this current budget. That's getting underway. And so there's a lot of different things going on. Again, more detailed information is available online. But as I wrap up the presentation, I would not only encourage you to look at the big document, but a lot of us don't really want to look at 400 pages. We do have something which referred to before is called the Budget in Brief, and that's available online. We took the 400 pages and condensed it to seven easy-to-read pages. And included on that is links to get to all sorts of different information available for the city. And it has different areas to find that information. So I would be happy to answer any questions on the big budget, the budget in brief, or anything else.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Questions? Tim?
Not so much a question, just a statement, Lynn. You've gone through this now a couple of times, sitting on council, just no way to go of all the different, the huge binder, the budget in brief, the processes, the meetings. You've just been very clear. You've been concise and it's, I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from counsel for staff? Dave?
Yeah, just one comment about the capital projects that you were just talking about and the use of sustainability thinking. The Sustainability Committee at one point brought forth a framework for, hopefully for use by city departments in considering projects and so forth. And it was a rather lengthy thing, but different things to think about in terms of whether we are addressing sustainability issues and concepts in that. And I'm very heartened to see that this is sort of being incorporated into the municipal capital improvement project thinking and process. So all that work didn't go to waste. We're, we're using it very well. So thanks to everybody for doing that.
Yeah, and on that, we actually have the Sustainability Manager that we have here at the city look at that part of the document and contribute to that. So yeah, we were excited about that because then you get it documented and yeah, it just gets more in with the process.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, Quincy?
Just really quick. So we are going into a decade of where we have not had to raise taxes. That, that's a big deal for the community. And it shows, as you stated earlier, the slide that talked about the history of disciplined budget management, that's huge. The planning from this council and other councils before us, it makes a big difference. A lot of communities, as, as Mr. Vreeman stated, or Councilman Vreeman stated, actually, we spent a lot of time on this. You guys have spent a lot of time on this. And a lot of other communities are not sitting as good as we are. Even though it's not bright, bright, a lot of communities are not sitting as good as we are. So kudos to you guys, your team, the whole organization, really. So everyone's doing what they can to make sure that we have a balanced budget and a good budget.
Other questions for staff?
And we still now have Holland Board of Public Works.
Thank you for that reminder. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, Dave, but, but we, we cut them back, we cut them back a little bit. So you get this slide?
I'm going to see how well I can dance on this.
So basically, it's, it's like a game show, like I'm going to show the next slide and you got to talk about it, right? Okay, ready?
Cool. Ready? Let's do it. Look at that. That's pretty cool, what that is, as a graph. Have a little fun with that, right? This is just to show the competitiveness after what we're proposing here in terms of electric utility, which has seen some pressures as relates to some inflationary influences on fuel, which is obviously a major contributor, as well as some of the external resources we have that supply power have some needs that we're funding over this year. And so there is a rate increase. It's planned. But reminder here, and I know that there's probably the slide that's really cool near the end of this that we're going to get to, showing the longer-term trend on the rates. But this shows the competitive situation that we have on residential. We are among the lowest utilities, or among the lowest rates within the state of Michigan. And even among the utilities, there are municipal utilities that are our brethren, doing a great job. But especially against the investor-owned utilities, you experience, if you are a Holland BPW customer, BPW customer, you have a 40 to 50% rate advantage over the investor-owned utility. And that's really important, to being able to keep money in your pocket. So that's a big one right there. You probably may or may not have the other categories, I don't know.
We'll get to the other one, but basically, it's electric rates, water rates.
Yeah, water. So in the water utility, one of the big things that's going on there is, we've got a 20-year regulatory mandate associated with changing out galvanized lines in our community that may have had, or did have at one point, a lead gooseneck near the water main connection to the galvanized line. And even though we are not showing any presence of lead showing up in our water services, there's still a requirement that we get in over the next 20 years and replace not only the public side, which is to the curb stop, but also the private side, which goes all the way to the home. And along with that, there are a lot of aging distribution lines that are cast iron in the community that we have a very aggressive capital plan. And it's also very, again, cost-effective, because we work in conjunction with the city and the Transportation Department in making sure that we are maximizing the efficiency of our jobs by doing the road work along with the utility work that's under the surface. But all of that in mind, we have a capital need in the water utility of roughly about $6 to $6.5 million per year for the foreseeable future. The amount of revenues that were being generated in water, we're not giving us enough free cash flow in the utility to be able to get to that level of expenditure. And so we have a rate track planned over the next couple of years here, that we're proposing about a 5% rate increase in water. Still very competitive, this is showing compared to the other auto-county communities. I can tell you that the city of Wyoming has just put forward in their budget about a 13% rate increase. This is not new, and not an exception just for the city of Holland. This is also other factors that are influencing it, including that we disinfect our water supplies using a bleach product, sodium hypochlorite. That actually has tripled in the last year in terms of per-unit costs. So all of that in mind, again, pretty reasonable, and it's going to keep us on a very healthy track to be able to stay ahead of infrastructure replenishment that's needed. So that's water.
Wastewater.
And in wastewater, again, this shows that we are, and we're the furthest one on the left there, kind of the middle of the pack of auto county again. Some of the factors that have been influencing wastewater are the biosolids, or as Keith likes to call it, sludge cakes, that we have to move out of our facility. Though the cost for disposal of biosolids comes by one of two ways, either putting it in a landfill, or putting it on fields for essentially nutrients that can be reused to help crops grow. We have been struggling with the landfills because they are getting less dry waste. That's a good thing, people are recycling more. But with less dry waste to mix with the sludge that we would bring, it causes issues with the cells that they have at the landfill. So we're having to haul as far away as Indiana, actually, at times, to dispose of by landfill some of the biosolids. And so what we are doing, the mitigation, as Lynn alluded to, is the anaerobic digester project. Why is that important? It does a lot of great things for us. It's going to reduce our biosolids production in half. It's going to take and create from the biosolids a methane product that can be used as a renewable resource for heat and power on-site, and that is the plan. And when the biosolids are, the ones that are left over from that process, the half that remains, are going to be much more flexible in terms of their reuse capability. And so with that, we see an advantage in reduction of costs going forward. But in the short run, we do have some needs yet that we're funding, so there is a modest rate increase proposed here, about 3.6% in wastewater. But again, keeping us in good competitive situation with the neighboring communities as it relates to that. And then, you don't have it in there. Oh, there's a really cool slide, though.
So I knew this was going to be.
Oh, good, you're ready. Okay, good. As Keith is talking about it, I'll just remind everybody that in electric, for example, about two years ago, there was a 10% rate decrease that occurred. And a couple of years before that, there was a 6% rate decrease that occurred. So this is the first time in about seven years that we've proposed a rate increase in electric, okay? And overall, if you look back, I don't know if you're going to be able to get there or not, are you?
I was there a second ago.
Okay.
Messed it up.
Okay. And essentially, yeah, you're on the right one this time. So, and with that in mind, when you look at over the last 10 years, people actually paid less for electric today or with this change than what they did 10 years ago. And when you adjust for inflation, the entirety of a residential bill, it's one of the last things in the slide deck, it's near the end. You're almost there.
Built to the.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, don't pay attention to the screen too closely. Keep going, a little bit more. Yeah, a little bit more. Right there. That's the one. So combined with all three of the services being received, you can see the blue line actually represents an adjusted-for-inflation number. You're about 17% lower adjusted-for-inflation in your total bill from the BPW after these changes than what you were back in 2014, is that first bar there, Keith?
16.
16, thank you, 2016. So about nine years, I guess, closer to about nine years of bars that are there. So again, a lot of important work. The one we didn't touch on in terms of rates is fiber, because we are building Holland City Fiber. We do plan to offer that service around $42 a month, that was what we had put into the projections for that. If things go as planned, and the projections are looking pretty favorable with that, is that, that'll be really good in terms of generating enough free cash flow for the utility that maybe we can even look at tempering that over time. But we're looking at starting at that level, and planning on and hoping for really good success at the rollout of Holland City Fiber as well. And that obviously is a big part of working with the city, and working with the fact that the citizens had voted for a millage to support the capital infrastructure associated with the passes, about $24 million. Good news is, we have bids in now for the design-build, we have some materials already on order, and things are lining up pretty well with what our cost estimates were at the start of that initiative. So we're really happy with how things are going there. So with that, or anything else that Lynn otherwise or I can answer, happy to do so.
Questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead, Quincy.
Just a comment, looking at this residential monthly bill history, that is amazing. I'm glad you put that on there, glad you found it. That's shooting for the North Star without a rocket, it's pretty good.
Yeah, thank you.
The community would love that, so.
Yeah. It's a tremendous advantage being on the BPW. Again, going back to the electric, especially, I see that's the biggest, the blue within that bar. But again, that's keeping a lot of money in people's pockets here in this community. So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I've got one for you, Dave, and that, and it's in regard to the biodigester, anaerobic digester?
Yes.
Savings, projected savings because of that has not yet been reflected in this.
It has not, half a year is in this. So some of the operating expenses, we are planning that the unit, the digester, rather, will be starting operation around September, hopefully fully operational by December of this year. So we've about a half a year savings in this. But those that want to look at in the detail of the book, and it is attached, the whole budget book for the BPW has a five-year plan in it. And if you look at treatment expenses, and you look at chemicals and power, you can see in the subsequent years, a reduction in expenses that are planned associated with the digester coming online. But about six months of that reflected in the next fiscal year, because it's coming on partway through the year.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you. Any other reports from staff, Mr. Van Beek, on the big budget? All right. This does also require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 city budget. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the fiscal year 2024 city budget?
Move to approve the budget as presented.
Move by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? I just want to echo what some council members said during the questions of staff. This is the biggest and most important thing that we do as a council each and every year. We spend six years cumulative, or six years, six months cumulatively, and this, on this process, starting with staff. Everything we do here has a process. Everything circles back. If you look closely at the reports from staff that we get, every single one of those reports, every one of those recommended action items ties back to a specific budget item, a specific priority of this council, so that we can trace what we do. We have been entrusted to be good stewards of the tax dollars that the people of Holland entrust to us. It's our job to plan what we do with those tax dollars, it's our job to execute well what we do with those tax dollars, and it's our job to account for every single penny of those tax dollars. And if you pay attention, we do each and every one of those things very well here, thanks to an incredible staff and a city council that, although sometimes we joke about having to sit through seven hours of budget meetings, we all recognize how incredibly important this is to this process, because nothing happens in this city that does not tie directly to the budget. And I appreciate the comments from other council members today, and the congratulations and kudos to our staff members, because you do make this a manageable process. Over 400 pages of budget. That's an awful lot, and that budget, as was mentioned by our finance director, is not all Excel spreadsheets. There are pictures in there of the things that we are purchasing, there are explanations, there are incredible graphs I posted when we were doing the budget meetings, some of the infographics that we were given as council and had people responding. These are incredibly helpful infographics to understand what's happening with my money in the city of Holland. That just builds confidence in our voters, in what it is that we're doing. And I cannot put a bigger exclamation point on the fact that we are investing $74 million in new infrastructure projects in the city of Holland this year. That's huge. We are investing in this community for the future. We're catching up from previous years when we didn't have the ability to do that, but we are investing in this community for the future, and we have not raised your tax rate at all. Now, if you looked at your tax bill, and it was bigger this year, that's not because we raised your taxes, that's because your property values went up. And if we had something to do with that by making this a more attractive for, community for people to live in, I apologize for that, but I believe that that's part of what our job is, is to make this community the best and most livable community it can be for the people that live here, and be good stewards of those resources. And I think tonight, although it may seem anticlimactic that there's not a lot of discussion from this council about this budget, that's because we've been working on this for six months. We know what's here, we're comfortable, we're confident in what is presented to us, that this is the best budget for the people of the city of Holland. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Huckstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Greeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing an opportunity for in-person public comment at our meetings, we do also have an email address that you can send communications to the city council, that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We receive all of those, council members receive them as part of our packet and read in each and every one of them, and then we accept them as part of the record here at our meetings. We don't read them all out loud at the meetings, but just accept them as a whole, and we do have one this week. So I would entertain a motion in regard to our written petitions and communications.
Move that we accept the written communications.
Move by Aaron Sors, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item 10A, text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, round eight. Mr. Van Beek? Round eight, and if in your packet, there are a lot of attachments here. For two of you, this would be the fourth time that you've gone through this presentation, because two of you sit in Planning Commission, which means it was considered and discussed, and ultimately moved on to you from the Planning Commission in public meetings. You all have sat through eagerly, with anticipation, the first description of this in our first reading. And I think we've suggested to Steve that all of those are on camera, for anyone that's interested to see three different times that presentation. So Steve, I think the challenge was, tell us what's in here, and maybe, like, not use 80 slides to do it. Let's see how you do.
Thank you, Keith. And that's for the most important thing that we work on, I thought it was UDO this whole time.
Maybe the most time-consuming.
Maybe the most time-consuming. So I do, first, I want to thank you for your patience with all of this. I know this has been a long haul, UDO itself was a very long haul. So as we are kind of thinking of UDO 8 as being the wrap-up to these constant updates and kind of corrections, clarifications, so thank you again for your patience. It really has been, I've heard teamwork mentioned several times tonight, really has been a huge team effort on everybody's part. And I guess I would say, the theme, or maybe what dominates this series of amendments, was probably a lot of the comments we got from the Transportation Department. Brian and his team were able to offer quite a few of these updates in this round. So again, thank you for your patience with all of this. So yes, I will try real quickly, and I'm going to try to do it without rolling through the slides, so bear with me. So the first couple changes that we have are in the toolbox section, that's sort of chapter one in the document, where we're updating things like how to measure a lot area, talking about how you determine a flag lot, and providing some graphics that go along with the flag lot itself. We have a, we have a section where we talk about designated officials. So the document talks a lot about maybe a specific title. We use fire marshal and city engineer in there quite frequently, and we wanted to have some language in there that, you know, maybe if that position was open, that it would have a designated person, his or her designated person. So rather than repeat that everywhere a title is mentioned, there is a, there's sort of a umbrella section in there that kind of captures that idea. So again, in the spirit of teamwork, I think Vince was the one that helped us with that language. Corner vision clearance, we provide a reference in the document that just provides the reader with information where you can find other sections where we talk about corners. So whether we're talking about a clear vision corner for a fence, or landscaping, or even, you might remember, one of the amendments that we made was about building corners. So we wanted to include that on that. Fire access roads. So we wanted to provide some clarification on the width of fire access roads, and insert one of the graphics from, we actually refer to the fire code itself in there. So we're inserting that graphic, providing some clarity for the width of fire access roads. The snow melt system, so I would describe the snow melt section as maybe one of the more substantial changes in this round. We don't have a section in UDO about snow melt, so we wanted to add one. That essentially says that, you know, we don't want people to cut into the snow melt system, and as a result of not cutting into it, if you had to serve, you know, your building maybe through the back or through the side, if you will, that we didn't want to, at least not think about how we're going to burden those lots that maybe have easements across them, so that they could be developed in the future. So it doesn't mean that those things can't happen, but we wanted some language in there, so the city engineer would really be the one that would be able to make that decision about how that was going to happen. Accessory structures, we added hot tub and sauna in there with swimming pools. Ironically, as through all of these amendments, we probably spent the most time at the Planning Commission talking about that particular section. Streets, driveways, and sidewalks. So again, there's a lot in there that we got from Transportation Department, and I describe it as really providing a lot of flexibility for the city engineer to be able to make some decisions. A couple of the highlights in that section were the, right now, there's that prohibition about putting rocks in the right-of-way, and we wanted to, again, give the city engineer the ability to be able to do some sort of alternative landscaping methods. I think I used the example before about, that's where we would be able to do like a rain garden in the right-of-way, which, you know, we already have some of those out there. And again, the street width, so we've got that clarity in the fire access section, and then we're also providing that same graphic and clarity in there for the actual public road to have some flexibility for the city engineer to vary some widths where they can. for the city engineer to vary some widths where they can. In land division section, we're providing some corrected references. The GMU approval process table. So we're simply providing maybe a more, an up-to-date section there that would be consistent with how we do the other tables. So we're really trying to just make it maybe a little bit more user-friendly so that table is the same way that the other tables are, look. Condo and PUD rezoning process, again, correcting and adding a couple references in there. In the definition section, we are clarifying that flag lot section. Again, just real quick, the way it's in there right now, flag lots are defined as one building behind another. There's other ways that you can have a flag lot, so we simply wanted to correct, update that definition, and then add a definition for determining lot area. The along and within section, we're simply changing to along or within. Thank you, Vince. And finally, South Shore Village. So this is probably outside of maybe what we would describe as these, you know, UDO amendments. The South Shore Village amendments really come from the updated South Shore Vision Plan that we have recently adopted. So in order to allow that plan to come to fruition, we want to change our code that would allow those things in that plan to happen. Probably the two big changes are adding a residential use component to the South Shore Village. So the section in that form-based code is amended several times to allow the residential use, and again, keeping it consistent with how we do other residential uses in the form-based district. And changing the setbacks. So right now, if you remember, the South Shore Village area, we have a 50-foot minimum, 55-foot maximum setback, which would really render maybe all of the buildings in that area in some sort of non-conformity. And again, with that South Shore Vision Plan, we really were bringing buildings up a little bit closer to the road. So the fact that on 17th Street, the north side and south side are a little bit different, what we came up with was allowing for a 20-foot minimum and a 30-foot maximum on the north side of the road, which would, we think, really bring maybe all of the buildings on the north side with the exception of the far west end, Jackie's place, to be conforming. And then on the south side, have a minimum of five, a maximum of 10-foot setback, which again, was really that vision plan that we approved, which was what we were trying to do with that as well, which is also very consistent with how we have many of the other form-based districts. So that's probably as quick as I can do, South, UDO number eight. So this is the recommended changes from the planning commission, and so we were hoping that you would adopt that tonight.
Right. Thank you, Steve. Questions from council for staff? There are none. Great, thank you, Steve.
Just a comment that Vince got three shout-outs in that presentation, so thanks, Vince.
It wasn't just me. There's another attorney in my office as well, and so I will not take all that credit.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, round eight?
Move to approve the amendments as presented so briefly and well.
Move by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? I just have one comment, I promise I'm going to keep it brief. I said this at the planning commission level. This was a long process of putting together this 400-plus-page UDO document, for those at home, a complete rewrite of our zoning and planning code. Other organizations may have said good enough at that point. Staff thanked us for our patience with this. I think we need to thank staff for their diligence in making sure that they get all of the details right on this. All of us over the years have used documents and forms and processes where we've scratched our heads and thought, who wrote this? Obviously, the people who put this together are not using this. Our staff did not settle for that, and what they have decided that they're going to do is make sure that this works not only well internally, but also is a document that's very easy for the public and our development community to be able to use. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that while we may grown about eight rounds of detailed little changes in this, each and every one of those is important to this moving forward and being the best that it can be. So thank you, staff, for that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Item 10B, again from the planning commission, 387 West 17th Street rezoning request. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and it's good to see Steve coming up once more. You know, for all of us, Steve, I think now, we joked about this today, you've been doing a fantastic job. How long have you been with the city now?
Year and a half.
I think you crossed this barrier with council tonight where you were given a little bit of a hard time. You are now officially past your honeymoon period. And all jokes aside, we work really hard here to have a culture where we take very seriously what we do. Mr. Vin Diken has a lot of good quotes, this is one of the good ones. But we don't take ourselves overly serious in how we go about doing it. So Steve, I love that you were like, UDO is the most important thing that we're presenting tonight, right? But I appreciate your sense of humor and all of our sense of humor in being able to get the job done well. And this is another one of those important items from our community and a recommendation from the planning commission. So Steve, why don't you explain this to us?
Sure. Yep, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just forward a couple of slides, one more. Yeah, there you go. So this is a rezoning request. This is a request to change the zoning at 387 West 17th Street from TNR to NMU. So what you see on the screen there, on the left-hand side, the future, our future land use map, with that red X through the piece of property that we are talking about, that's the property that they would like to rezone. The property is in the category of urban residential, and they would like to rezone that to NMU. On the right-hand side, you see the current zoning map, so that maybe that pink color is the NMU district. That is the existing Port 393 facility, and this request has really been generated by their desire to expand their facility. So they would like to buy the home there on 387 West 17th Street to, I guess essentially, have a place where people could get ready if they're having an event there. So that is the idea, that is what generated this request. The planning commission has taken a look at this. They have approved both the site plan and the special land use. It's called an event venue in our UDO, and that requires the special land use. So the planning commission has approved those two things, and they are recommending to you that you approve the rezoning to the NMU district for this. I would tell you that the planning commission did spend a little bit of time talking about, well, what if it wasn't this business and this business went away, you know, would we be okay with this being in the NMU district? And I would say that they thought that it made a lot of sense for this to be rezoned to NMU. That little strip that goes down Cleveland, that's part of the Port 393, is about 44 feet wide. And so I think part of the rationale with that too is by allowing this other lot to be NMU, you would actually have the ability to have this be a little bit more usable for NMU purposes, for instance, if this business wasn't here in front of you. So again, not to confuse sort of the site plan and special land use, since you're really just talking about the rezoning aspect of this, but wanted to give you a little bit of background of how we got here. So the recommendation is to approve the rezoning of 387 West 17th Street to NMU.
Thanks, Steve. Questions from council?
So this will, if approved, this new part, if the business wasn't there, it would still run with the land or how you say?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. So that's not a bad thing. I mean, I think, as you say, it fits in with the neighborhood. And that used to be, that whole area used to be the school and a restaurant. Remember that? And it was probably even, this is maybe a quieter, more desirable use. So, okay, thank you.
And thanks, Steve, for reminding us that we're not taking a vote on what this intended use is, but that the change of this, of the potential uses for this piece of property to anything that might be allowed under NMU, and exactly what you were saying, council member Aaron Sors, was that it's, it is, we need to be cognizant of that. One question I had in that regard, can you remind me and rest of council, what's across the street on 17th Street there? Because that's a...
It's a parking lot.
That's a parking lot that's across the street from it there as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're surrounded by uses that are essentially commercial-type uses on every side of this except for the one that would be to the east.
The east.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Steve, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve 387 West 17th Street rezoning request.
Move by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Oh, yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 12E 6.1, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation Department, Sal Perez Scholarship Fund, anonymous donor, $404.85. Parks and Recreation Department, Tulip City Kids Triathlon, Delta Dental, $300. Downtown Group, Downtown Development Authority, Downtown Restroom Refurbishment Project, Holland Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, $10,000. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gifts with the token of our appreciation.
Move by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. I just have one question for staff. There was a reference there to the downtown restrooms. Did I hear that the downtown restroom refurbishment is done and those are back open again?
That is exactly correct. We actually got our final plumbing inspection this week of our stainless steel urinals, exciting, in the downtown restrooms, but those will be maintenance-free, so that's good. So yes, that project is complete, and those are open, just in time for all the tulip time visitors, pre-tulip time visitors that showed up today.
I know that's a little off-topic with the gifts, but I figured since there was one that was referencing it, that was all right for me to ask about. So we have motion and support, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12E 6.2, adoption of the 2024 strategic plan and business plan. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. We believe that we've established, if you would, a rhythm and an important rhythm that supplements and really is one of the foundations for the budget that you adopted tonight. And it makes sense, it seems, to adopt a strategic and business plan on the same cycle that covers the same time period that's in the budget. So before you is the result of your work, admittedly that myself and staff put together on your behalf of your work from the retreat, and strategic planning, kind of signifying things that live over multiple years, that you check back upon but probably live over multiple years, and a business plan which is more targeted towards perhaps a shorter timeframe. So what you have in front of you tonight is a recap of that process, and then all of that put into one document that, as you're aware, then quarterly, we provide you an update on where we stand with that strategic and business plan. So that is presented for your consideration and adoption tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the adoption of the 2024 strategic plan and business plan?
Will be approved.
Move by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, I apologize in advance, I have some. First of all, I think you're all aware that we had a pretty important community question yesterday, and thank you again to Kathy and her team for running a local election. And the community with a 63% yes vote, I believe communicated to all of us, support and direction to continue to pursue the waterfront Holland vision and guiding principles that we've worked on, that you've all worked on for more than five years, that at this point culminated in that ballot request yesterday to authorize the city and the BPW to pursue a land sale. I think the mayor and maybe others of you are going to say more about this, but just, you know, really, in so many ways, the work is now just beginning, and really, the expectation now shifts to GDK with the concept that they have, and really shifts back to the way we do things here. We talked about process a lot tonight. And the way things start is that we certainly work with those that are taking a look at our UDO, that are taking a look at things like our waterfront Holland vision and guiding principles, and work with our staff. But ultimately, the expectation is they submit something, a set of plans to us, that then staff goes through, and then we start that process like we do with any development project that goes to planning commission, is the subject of neighborhood outreach meetings as required in our UDO. That is the subject of public hearings at our planning commission, and really holding it up against, again, the UDO and our waterfront Holland vision in this. So in so many ways, the work has just begun on that project yesterday. But I always like to remind that waterfront Holland was not just about the vote yesterday and not just about that one project. And in fact, really exciting news today also to talk about is you've heard about the ice rink, and we're really excited to announce today that we had a partnership and a matching grant program that was made available. It's $50,000 that if our community responds over the course of 60 days, that the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, through patronicity it's called, we've used it one other time successfully with the outdoor discovery center Sally Smolli playscape in Window on the Waterfront. We're doing it again for the ice rink and the wonderful dream and quite frankly, gift of a lifetime that Frank Cry provided to our ice rink. We are in the final stages, we're in the home stretch of getting all those design documents prepared, presented to you to go out to bid, but today, we've launched this patronicity crowdfunding site. We really wanted to do that in preparation for tulip time so that all of the people that are swarming Holland and I would say sometimes kind of the de facto, you know, home court of tulip time at Window on the Waterfront, we're going to have a sign right there that talks about what's going to be built there, and it invites them and invites the community into an opportunity to give through that patronicity crowdfunding site with a simple QR code and the simple ability to give and know that that money is matched. So look for more of that. We are already launching this afternoon a lot of social media about that, inviting the community into that, and I know that you all are aware of and are invited to a series of four community events to talk about. Some of them are with specific groups, but also moving later into the summer to really invite everyone in the community to learn more about this project and see if they're inspired to become involved through the inspiration of Frank Cry's gift of a lifetime. And yes, it is tulip time. You know, I think that cold weather probably held off the tulips a little bit, but the Our guests and our visitors to Holland, I think especially with the weather improving, they're coming. We are excited about that. But we also know for a long time, or sometimes not everyone, always gets excited for that. So, I always remind everybody, patience from our residents, for those that are joining us. A huge thank you to Tulip Time and city staff and so many others that volunteer and put, you know, our best foot forward in greeting those that come. And certainly excited that the restrooms are open, so launching that very well. And I'm going to hand it off to two of our other staff that have short things to say also. Mr. Van Dyken is going to talk about a little thing that we had going on at Windmill Island Gardens in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, so it's not often anymore, I get new ones at this point in my career, but this was definitely a new one. So, I think we've made it pretty, pretty clear to council that we've been working with production company for many, many months to film some portions of the film Holland, Michigan, here in Holland, Michigan. I'll start with kind of three questions that we get a lot. The first is, yes, Nicole Kidman was here filming at Windmill Island Gardens and in the Deswan Windmill. No, Matt Helmes and I didn't meet her. We were not allowed really anywhere near her, which is fine. And then the final one is, well, this is Holland, Michigan. Why are they filming in Holland, Michigan in Tennessee? And it was really, it was kind of neat to talk to some of their staff, their production folks, that just said, your downtown is so vibrant and so beautiful and so busy, it creates a logistical problem for us to try to come in and film there. So, the fact that our downtown is so good was a big part of the reason that they actually didn't and weren't able to film, more of the film Holland, Michigan in Holland, Michigan. So, I'm going to take that as a, really, I'll take that as a badge of honor for our downtown. What a, what a cool thing to have people that film in large communities all over the country, all over the world, come in and just say such great things about our downtown and our Holland, how clean it is, how beautiful it is, over and over from different people, we kept, kept hearing that. They were great, they were here for, you know, really on site out there for two days. They filmed everything. When they were done, they put everything back exact, literally exactly where it was. They came in, they moved their set in for the movie, but they clearly took pictures and videos of the inside of the mill, and things were within a quarter inch of where they were when they arrived. So, going into it, to say that we were concerned and apprehensive, perhaps maybe putting it mildly, but it turned out to be a positive experience. So, we're looking forward to that movie coming out. Sounds like it's going to be a year or two before it does, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work with them and maybe have some kind of a screening locally when it does come out. So, just an overall positive experience.
Thanks, Matt. And to share, we talked so much about Vince tonight. Vince, you've, you've got another announcement from the city attorney's office.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Van Beek. I had some other good news. I asked Keith if I could share with council and the mayor. I don't know, maybe ten years ago or so, I met an engineer at the BPW. And a great engineer, worked with a lot of staff there. And a few years back, I learned that he was attending law school at night. And his name's Carl Thorwalt. And so Carl came to me about last year sometime, he was at Western Michigan Cooley, said, hey, my last class, I need an internship, and I need somebody to be a mentor and to grade what I'm doing. And, and I said, hey, yeah, come on in, I'd be happy to have, you know, have you help out. And he actually got licensed as an intern and was able to help us in the prosecution. So, Carl did ordinance prosecution. He examined one witness on a jury trial and also did a bench trial, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So, very exciting stuff. Well, Carl took the bar exam in February, and last Friday, we learned that Carl passed the bar exam. One of, it was a forty-five percent passage rate for first time takers in Michigan. So, the mayor might, might appreciate that. But we are very excited to be welcoming the newest attorney to our firm and also someone who will likely continue with ordinance prosecution, not as an intern, but hopefully as an attorney. And he's asked me to stand in, stand with him to be sworn in later this month before Judge Van Alsburg. So, we're very happy about that, and we just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Thorwalt.
That's great, that's great, thank you for sharing that, that's awesome. And that's all we have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Van Beek. I have a couple of things tonight. First, a proclamation. We, we did declare, excuse me, April as faith month in the city of Holland. And every year on May fourth, we celebrate the National Day of Prayer as well, and I have a proclamation in that regard. Whereas, we recognize the vision of our founders' understanding that religious freedom of expression was fundamental in the formation of our great nation. And these freedoms have helped us to create and sustain a nation of remarkable religious vitality and diversity across the generations. And whereas the United States of America recognizes devout persons from every nation have come to America seeking the freedom to worship free from persecution. And whereas we acknowledge our local history is closely bound to the privilege granted by our constitution as early settlers in Holland, Michigan, under the leadership of Albertus Christian Vinaldi, came to Holland to find the freedom to express their faith according to their conscience. And whereas prayer has always been an integral part of American life, in every city, town, and rural community across our country, people of every religious denomination gather to worship according to their faith in churches, synagogues, temples, and mosques. And whereas the people of faith lift our voices and hearts in prayers of thanksgiving for the blessing of freedom. And whereas people of faith pray for the health and happiness of loved ones, for inner peace and peace among nations, and for the wisdom to face the challenges of today. And whereas in times of crisis, we pray for courage, strength, wisdom, protection, and assistance to better serve our community. And whereas we pray for the peace in our communities across America and nations who are facing challenges in their way of life. And whereas we confront the crises and challenges of our time, we call upon the power of prayer to provide hope and uplift us for the work ahead. And whereas on this National Day of Prayer and every day, we unite with purpose and resolve to recommit ourselves to the core freedoms that help define our nation and by extension, our community. And whereas we celebrate the blessing that we can exercise our convictions freely, no matter our faith or beliefs. And whereas let us find in our prayers the determination to overcome adversity, rise above our differences, and come together as one to meet this moment in our history. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, mayor of the city of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, call on residents to reaffirm and celebrate the role of prayer in our community and to honor the religious diversity of America on the National Day of Prayer, celebrated on May four, twenty twenty-three. And we encourage our residents to join in prayer in their own manner, seeking strength from God to face the problems of today, requesting guidance for goodwill among all people, and giving thanks for the rich blessings that our community and our nation have enjoyed throughout our history. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland, this third day of May, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Nathan Box. I have a couple other comments as well. I'm going to reserve my comments on Tulip Time because anybody who knows me knows that I'm looking forward to my favorite week of the year, and I'm just going to leave it at that. Oh, yeah, and the tulips are spectacular, get out there and take a look at them. I do, I do have to piggyback some of the comments that Mr. Van Beek made in regard to yesterday's election. Kathy, thanks to you and your staff, wonderful. I was the first person at the polling place, at my polling place, yesterday morning. They got locked out until shortly before, and they were scrambling like crazy to make sure that they got those doors open and the polls going by seven A M. And they did it. It was great to see that amount of work and that much concern to make sure that they had those doors open, and they did everything correctly and made sure that everyone had the opportunity to vote, and those votes counted. And I was also here at nine o'clock last night as the results were coming in, watching you and your staff, making sure that every vote was counted correctly. Everything was dealt with perfectly, making sure every T was crossed, every I was dotted, so that we made sure that every vote was counted correctly. So, thank you for that. I know that that's a big job and a long day, and a lot of people and a lot of volunteers, and they are greatly appreciated, so thank you for that. I'm also very pleased with the outcome of the, of the vote yesterday. This council voted nine, nothing to put that forward to a ballot of the people as required by the city charter, and I think rightly so. It was an important decision point in a process that has already taken five years. Some people may think that that's the end of the process, it's not. It's essentially the beginning of the process. Now, we need to get to work. As Mr. Van Beek said, it's up to the proposed developers to put together a plan that they can present to planning commission and to council and to go through that process. We also have a job. We have expressed to the people of the city of Holland that we want to fulfill the vision of waterfront Holland as expressed through that waterfront Holland process. I want to remember, I want to remind the public that waterfront Holland is more than just the properties that were discussed and voted on in yesterday's vote. We own public land on the waterfront from Collin Park to Windmill Island. And there were a lot of different aspects of waterfront Holland, a lot of different amenities that people wanted, a lot of different types of uses that people wanted. And I want to remind people that we can't provide every amenity and every use in every section of waterfront Holland. There are some places that are more fitting for green space. There are some spaces that are more fitting for kayaks. There are some spaces, as we learned that the public was interested in yesterday, spaces for more commercial uses and marinas and opportunities to walk along the waterfront and maybe go to, go to a restaurant or have a condo or a hotel. Our job is to make sure that we're trying, doing our very best to fulfill as much of that vision for the waterfront as we can for the people of Holland. And also, what we need to make sure that we are doing moving forward is fulfilling the promise that we made to the people of Holland, that we would provide permanent public access on this site. If you read any of the comments and heard any of the discussion, people are concerned about the possibility of losing that public access at some point. We have the tools, we have the power, we have the authority to make sure that that public access remains permanent within the proposal that, that will be presented to us. I'm going to, I am going to stand steadfast to that, and I hope that the rest of this council does as well in this process because we made, we've made a promise to the people of Holland, we need to fulfill that promise along the way. It was great to see that sixty-three point five percent of the people believed in the process that we have been going through for the last five years. I think that that shows that they have confidence in us, they have confidence in the way that we do things here, and they have confidence that we are going to continue to do that as we move forward in this. I've been, I've been thinking about it, I've had lots of conversations about this. If you're watching from home, do not expect that dirt is going to be turned at any point in the immediate future. It's going to be months or years because there are a lot of approvals that need to happen. Some of those are here at the city level, some are going to be at the state level and perhaps at the federal level as well. But we are going to make sure that we do this right because it is a one, once in a lifetime opportunity to be able to provide a world-class waterfront for the people of the city of Holland. I have lots and lots, like more I could say, but I'm going to leave it at that. The next item on our agenda is appointments, motions, and communications from council members. And Councilmember Aaron Storrs, I believe that you said that you had something that you would like to discuss this evening.
Although you're a hard act to follow, so I thought it was exciting, but I'm not so sure now. But I want to report on the Materials Task Force, which is a former sustainability group. And you've kind of been primed, listening to Lynn McCammon and Dave Coster and Mark over here with, you know, it's sustainability, which we're trying to embed in our, what we do at City Hall. But Dan Borzma is in charge of this group, and he and Andrew Reynolds of BPW revitalized the Holland Energy Fund. And now Dan and his team are doing the same thing with the Sustainability and Materials Task Force. And currently, what they're working on is, as you know, we started the big recycling tubs last year already, it's been a year, with a grant. They have received another grant in excess of thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Recycling Partnership and Michigan Eagle for recycling quality improvement. And it comes not only with the money, but with technical assistance. And so, this takes our recycling to a new level. So, there is some contamination involved in recycling. I mean, and so, you know, a lot of people put in things that maybe aren't appropriate. And so, they're going to design a study and probably run it in the fall and then hopefully come up with some kind of results by November when it's National Recycling Day or American Recycling Day. It is actually more exciting than maybe this even sounds. But, you know, we, it's a great group, and it's so, the Holland Energy Fund and this group, and maybe it was COVID, it came out of COVID, but everything is a great group of people, very collaborative. They're working with Hope College, with Gentex, with recyclers down the road, hoping things will become seamless. So, you'll have a place to drop off your mattresses or appliances, which you really can't fit into the tubs now, and I don't think it's appropriate anyhow. And we have donuts. Mike Trathue is on it. He's, he's beamed in from, you know, his place in Texas, no donuts there. But it's amazing how much expertise comes in. And so, it's very exciting with this grant and the partnerships. What else? So, so congratulations to him and to all of us for all of the teamwork involved. I don't know what he does, but it's, it's working. I also want to, and I wasn't going to do this, but there's so many shout-outs tonight, and I want to give one to the C N S department and Tricia Dryer and everybody who works with her because they not only do their work at their jobs, but I don't know what happened with Ward Ford these last couple of weeks, but I've needed to contact Tricia about having people come out and check on things. And she's always there, and then she goes beyond that and looks. And with the backup from the two Marks and everyone else there, it's, you know, what a, what a good group. What a, a city hall, as we all said, and that's enough about that. But anyhow, that's my update.
Great, thanks, Nikki. Anyone else? Mr. Vreman?
I want to put an exclamation point on your Tulip Time reserved response a second ago, Nathan. Just to just kind of stop and for us to think as a leadership of our team of all the different entities that are engaged in making the Tulip Time or really it's Holland shine. I think the best example I have is I volunteer with Tulip Time during the week. I take the week off work and I do tours, and we've organized tour guides. There are fifty-four individuals that have raised their hands to say, we will be tour guides for walking tours, for bus tours, or people that come to town or part of our residents that want to learn more about Holland. The narrative that is shared, that's been developed with that script is so much more than the tulip, but it's the story of Holland and the collaborative work that happens between the business community, our faith community, the education teams, the nonprofit, all the different entities, our city, and how that works together. And it is not until they hit Collin Park that they hear about tulips. They're hearing the history of Holland and how we've become who we are, our ethnic diversities and all the different things that take place, and how the collaborative work between city parks, D D A, P S D, the Civic Center, Windmill Gardens, the police department, everything that takes place to put Tulip Time on. And I just want to say, number one, a huge shout-out to thank all the different entities that kind of put all their other stuff on a little bit of hold while the festival takes place, as we gear up for that. It's really the launch of summer in my head. We get done Tulip Time and like, it's summer. And just the economic impacts that take place for our restaurants and our shops and everything that takes place here. And I know some days we can go, ugh, we hate it, or all the different things that come with it. But at the end of the day, it is huge, huge. And Holland itself is an inspiration story for leadership at its finest levels around our country and world. We see people, we see guests from every fifty, all fifty states and around the world. We have documented of people that come here because they comfort tulips, they don't plan any of their day, just blows me away. Our tour guides help them plan their time here, expose them to different places, restaurants, whatever it is, but they leave inspired to be engaged in their own communities. I think that's huge kudos to everyone who rolls up their sleeves, from city staff to volunteers across our city. So, thanks, and that's enough of that.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else want to try to follow that? Yes, Lynn, oh, Quincy, sorry.
Go ahead. No.
Okay, Quincy.
So, a few things. One, I, I believe you can overshare, right? But you can never over-thank you. So, Kathy, I want to say thank you again for all the hard work that you put on. Late night, long day yesterday, and here you are again. So, hopefully there's an award for you. Wink, wink. Wink, wink. Give her the week, give her Saturday. And then adding another exclamation point to Tulip Time. I look at Tulip Time, we get to celebrate all these holidays, right? We get an additional holiday on the calendar. That's how I look at Tulip Time. Once upon a time, I was not, I was one of those people who were, what the Grinch is the Christmas, that's how I was to Tulip Time. Don't know exactly what changed that, but over the course of time, I look forward to Tulip Time. I look forward to all the things that you spoke about, all the things that you've talked about in the past. It is such a fun time to, people love to show off their stuff, right? We get to show off our community. And, and it's not just this group or that group, it's the whole community who take the opportunity to show off Holland. If Holland wasn't that great of a place, Matt wouldn't have been talking about Hollywood coming to Holland, Michigan to shoot a movie. We wouldn't be talking about all the awards that we get. And this is our holiday that we get to share and express that. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about, I'm going to, first, I'm going to ask a couple of questions, share some information, and then I'm going to ask some questions in closing. This is a touchy subject. Some people may look at me indifferently, but as you know, that doesn't bother me. But I want you to look past any offense that you may have against me after I say what I'm going to say, and I want you to listen and understand where I'm coming from. First question I have is, do you have a kid in your family from the age eight to 14 that you're close with? Eight to 14. And I want you to think about that kid. For me, I have two kids that are in that age range. The next one is, at what age did you lose your virginity? What age did you lose your virginity? What prompted me down this road was, we had a few people come here and present a book to us, Gender Queer. They never took the time to dive into it, but after a few people looked at it or brought it to us, I decided to look into it. And what I found was pretty disturbing. The book is pornographic in nature, it's written in an elementary comic book style, it's found in our local public schools and our libraries, and it's accessible to that eight to 14-year-old group. I'm going to read a few things in here and, and share a few things in here. And it will get uncomfortable, I'm sure. I was 11 or 12 years old the first time I can remember fantasizing about having a penis. I was laying fully clothed on the hillside under an open sky. I had folded a handful of grass between my legs. For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and manipulating the bulge. This would evolve into hip thrusting while thinking of my latest gay shit. And here, in this book, we have two guys laying on top of each other, butt naked. This page here, there's a full frontal of a lady, everything, full frontal. When I was 14 or so, I told a close friend, oh, I'm sorry, that's not the right one. This one here has Plato's Symposium, a rendition of it, just a picture. And in this picture, it shows an adult male naked and a young male naked. And the adult is on his knees fondling the young male's penis. In 2013, I disclosed, I discovered Erica Moan's webcomic, Oh Joy Sex Toy. In a comic from November on that year, she talked about the first sex toy she ever purchased, a $10 bullet vibrator. Moan writes, "My first orgasm is still one of my most vivid lovely experiences. It was the first time ever I ever loved my body." The way she talked about the orgasm made me wonder if I actually, I've, hmm, never had one. I guess I should get one of these and try it. A few weeks later, I bought one. I remember leaning in my bedroom doorway, imagining how good this vibrator was going to feel. I got off by pressing the front of my jeans, the unopened box in my hand. Fast forward, we've been dating for two months. We've made out, we've had sex, we've moved on to the sexting at work. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on. It will, I can't wait to put it, I can't wait to put it on you. It will fit you, it will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. You are so going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life. Holy shit. Then I want you inside of me. This is the most I've turned, this is the most turned on I've ever been in my life. I'm dying. Then the next visual picture is them having oral sex, looking down. The next picture is from the side of them having oral sex with the penis in their mouth. Pornography material is not allowed in the public schools. Public school, they have a policy in place, and it says, student activity strictly prohibited. Sending, accessing, uploading, downloading, or distributing offensive, profane, threatening, or pornographic, obscene, or sexually explicit materials. The library has two sections. One, the internet and computer rules under their policy and rules as well. It says, "The Herrick District Library follows the rules and regulations of the CIPA, the Child Internet Protection Act. Therefore, the library does not allow anyone using a computer in the library premises to view material that is obscene, sexually explicit, and/or may be considered harmful to minors." The internet and computer policy has something in there as well. Library computers may only be used for legal purposes. Examples of an unacceptable use include, but not limited to, the following. The display of sexually explicit or pornographic materials. So if adults get caught looking at pornographic material, they get kicked out of the library. I don't know how long they get kicked out. I don't know if they're expelled completely, but they get kicked out of the library. And in the library, we have this book, which I consider pornographic. Definition of pornography. Printed or visual material contained the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activities intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. Definition of child pornography. And in this book, these are kids represented in this book. It goes from fourth grade, and then it goes all the way up to when they're in college. Pornographic film, video, or other visual representations that shows a person who is under the age of 18 years and is engaging in an explicit sexual activity, for an example, showing nude photos, videos. And that's punishable by law. But yet again, it's in this book. I want to make it really, really clear that I know this book is associated with the LGBT community. That, that is not my issue. My issue is that kids, little kids, have access to this. To me, that is absolutely wrong. There's no kid that should be able to have access to this. Zero. So it has nothing to do with me saying, you need to live this way, or you need to make these decisions. We live in America. People get to do whatever they want, they get to make the decisions they want, as long as you're not breaking the laws. You get to do those things freely. But to have this kind of material, to have access to our kids, in my opinion, is unacceptable. Our kids, we have the labels on things that says, keep out of reach of children. There's a reason for that. These kids, they can't drive, which is really a good thing. They can't stay out all night. We put curfews on our kids. They can't buy alcohol. They can't take medicine, Tylenol, aspirin, anything on their own. They can't even do it at school. If they're on something, it has to go through an adult, right? It has to go through an adult to be distributed to the kids. Kids don't get to do a lot of things that parents get to do, including looking at pornography. As a grown-up, you have the option to do that. But as a kid, we cannot allow our kids to be looking at pornography? It's not right. It's not right. And so, in closing, I'm going to ask you to remember that eight to 14-year-old that I asked you about. And I'm going to ask you this. What I read today, would you read that to them? And what I read is only a handful of things in this book. Would you read that to them? Or would you let them read that to you? Would you sit down and say, hey, read this to me? I know I would not. I absolutely would not. My kids are in that age range of eight to 14. And I will protect them with my life, as I'm sure all of you who have had kids at that age would protect them with your life. And if anybody brought harm to them or brought anything foul to them, that is not what you believe is right, you would stand up for that. And that's why I'm here today, saying what I'm saying. I know as a council, this isn't something that we have direct control over, but as leaders of this community, as leaders of this great city, we have to do something for our kids. I can't tell you what to do, but I can bring it to your attention. But they are our next generation. They are our emerging generation. They are the ones who will sit behind this dius. They are the ones who will patrol the streets. They are the ones who will protect people. They are the ones who will come up with the great ideas in our communities. They are the ones who will lead this country. And we have to protect them. Yep, there will come a day when they can pick it up and do whatever they want with it. But at that age, it's not the time. Thank you.
Any other communications from council members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.